All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order.
Good for you.
Yeah, why not? Let's get going here. Uh, no declaration of public notice?
Yep.
Yes.
Was that declaration?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Oh, no, let's go. That's where, that's good job.
We'll have to call John.
Hey, you're off to a good start.
Okay, sorry, here we go.
But it's still fourteen.
Yeah.
I counted, but it was twenty below.
I know.
All right.
I drove this morning.
Okay, so we had declaration of public notice. Um, uh, the order of business, um, can be altered. We only have four members right now. Um, so we will continue. Public appearances.
None.
I see nine. Moving on to the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Uh, three of them, okay. Uh, the failure.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, recognitions.
Okay, I would, um, do have four that I'd like to state, um, tonight. Um, very, um, again, very proud of some of our staff and students of events recently. So, to begin with, an activity, uh, Menon Grove High School Student Leaders, uh, from across a variety of clubs and organizations came together, uh, recently to work on a school-wide event in the name of Acceptance, Inclusion, and Compassion. Uh, the MGHS Special Olympics Basketball Event paired a team of student leaders from the high school against local Menon Grove Special Olympics basketball team. Uh, the council was an incredible event, um, and there is a link for board members with additional information, photos, video, and so on. So, a special thank you to the student organizers, uh, Zoe Keck, Kaylee Luter, Hannah Hubing, and Ethan Brownton, and then the teacher advisor as well, uh, Mr. Quesno. Uh, secondly, we had several seventh and eighth grade students from GDS participate in the Science Olympiad, uh, regional competition at UW Milwaukee last weekend, and our students were among the twenty-seven middle schools represented in Division B, and again, uh, there's a link with additional information and results. Mrs. Owen, sixth grade, social studies class held a museum for parents, classmates, and staff to help us understand the different aspects of ancient Egyptian culture. Students chose any topic, researched it, created an artifact, and presented during the museum, and again, there's a link with some photos for board members to view. And lastly, uh, the Cottage Grove School Geography Bee was recently held. Uh, the school Geography Bee champion will have the opportunity to advance to the next level of competition by taking an online test to determine qualification in Wisconsin State Geography Bee on March twenty-ninth. Uh, congratulations to all the fourth graders who participated.
All right, any comments? No comments? All right, correspondence and announcements?
I just have one. We, we all got, um, the letter from our Dane County Board Supervisor trying to fucking handle it. It might have just come today, so.
Yes.
So, will you?
I did reply, yeah, and I forwarded on to, uh, to Paul Ross yet as well. They may have already had the information, but he'll make sure that we, uh, if not, that they put the, it looks like, yeah, an excellent opportunity.
Yeah. It was for a student representative on the county board, and just, um, the applications are due fairly early for really sensitive day.
Yeah.
It came to everybody.
It was this afternoon, it was late.
Oh, you're right.
I was starting when I come. Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I got it forward on.
Hey, Jeff, how you doing?
Good.
You have any correspondence or announcements?
It's a little cold out there.
Okay.
If anybody didn't know that.
Good announcement. All right, uh, superintendent's report.
Okay, just two, um, items. First of all, one that's not on board docs, but just a quick update with regard to the weather cancellations. Uh, you've seen, you know, a lot of correspondence, uh, so first of all, a special thank you to Joyce and Katie, uh, real team effort in trying to coordinate the communications out to staff and parents and, um, and community, and fortunately, we have really, National Weather Service has done a, really stepped up the last couple of years of providing school districts in particular timely information, and so in this case, we had timely, it turned out to be accurate, information that really helped. So, we have that, and we have a high degree of confidence. As you know, it's kind of unique that we don't normally make announcements the day before because we really want to be certain about the weather conditions. In this case, we were pretty certain, so it's certainly helpful when parents can plan ahead. Um, and, uh, so we are off again tomorrow with the cold weather, um, and then the weather, uh, wind chill warning is lifted, uh, by mid-morning, and then we should be able, um, you know, proceed normally on Friday. Interestingly, you've all seen the weather report, also now we're talking forties on the weekend, so, um, one bit of positive news, we need to verify this, but as we look at our minutes, it appears that we're just gonna squeak under the, uh, or over the minimum required minutes, so I don't believe we're gonna need to make up school days at this point. We'll double-check our math next week and make sure that we've, we've met that criteria. Uh, and if we were to have additional, you know, days, we certainly, um, would come to the board here, wanting adjustments, you know, with calendar that we'd have to deal with.
Dane, what are the criteria that, uh, schools are reused?
Yeah.
To, uh, to call off school? It varies by district.
Yeah.
Bus routes, and that's.
So.
But it might be, it might be good, I didn't, I haven't gone online, maybe you have this, but it might be good to put down the three or fours, half dozen of those criteria that you consider.
Yeah, we do, and actually, we have it posted on our website. We also sent a letter to, uh, parents, uh, at the beginning of winter with the criteria, and we just reset that again this past week as a reminder. So, with wind chill, we actually have very strict criteria. We basically follow, uh, when the National Weather Service has issued a wind chill warning, which is, uh, thirty-five below. Um, and so all the other Dane County schools all use the exact same criteria with the exception of Madison. Uh, they made a decision a year ago to change the criteria, and, um, they, uh, decided that they will consider closing at a wind chill of twenty-five below and not wait for the warning at thirty-five below. Uh, so this year is the first time that that came into play, where they closed on Tuesday, and they're the only school that, that did. Uh, but we still feel very, you know, high degree of confidence that, that the wind chill warning level is where we really have students at risk. The biggest risk for our students is really standing at the bus stop and students that need to walk to school. Uh, and, and so, you know, unfortunately, what happens on these really cold days, um, understandably, some parents will try to keep the kids, you know, maybe in the house until the bus comes. Our bus drivers know that they need to wait, you know, make sure that the kids are out there. Well, then inevitably, what happens is the buses get a little bit behind schedule, and if you're on the end of that route, you, you might be five or ten minutes, and so, um, and that, that becomes a challenge, because if we have kids waiting outside, you know, so that, that's the, the biggest piece there, but, um, you, by this time of year, you know, our, our routes are really down, and, you know, the timing is, is pretty good, so, um, so that's really the, the consideration, the wind chill. The snow is obviously a little bit more subjective. Um, you know, anytime we have a forecast, you get that four, five, six inch range is when we start, you know, really considering that. Uh, we normally would never cancel the night before for snow, but we'd want to wait till the morning to make sure we actually got it, but recently, these forecasts, we talk about high degree of certainty of eight inches or above, you know, we felt confident making the call, you know, on that, and, uh, so, but for the most part, snow will, absent of something of that extreme, we normally wait till the morning to make that call.
Is it a bus route problem when the snow gets deeper?
Yeah, and, and buses actually handle snow pretty well. It's when we have the drifting in the rural areas with winds that it can be create, you know, that challenge, and then our students who drive. We have a large, you know, number of our student, high school students that drive themselves, and our staff for that matter.
Some staff travel.
Yeah, yeah, so that's all part of the consideration as well. So, actually, the, the student drivers, the staff are probably more of a challenge sometimes for them than the actual buses.
Yeah, I can attest, Tuesday was kind of busy out there, especially going on in.
Yeah.
That drifting and the snow blowing and stuff was ridiculous, but, uh, as long as everybody was safe, I think, uh, I think our school district did a wonderful job of making that decision, and, um, uh, I think everybody's safe, I didn't hear no casualties or anything, so I'm good with it. If anybody out there in, uh, TV land got anything to say about it, they can definitely report it to me.
Sure.
But I think you handled everything great.
Okay, uh, the second one, just briefly, I just wanted to give you a heads up about the staffing plan. We always bring the staffing plan to the board for approval in February, but I just wanted to let you know now, uh, a little bit about the process and what we're working on. So, I included on the board docs just a copy of the document that you had last year in March with the FTE, and remember, this is always a preliminary plan, but at least, so you have a heads up so that when we start hiring staff and bringing those, you know, uh, individuals for approval, that, well, you, you know why we're hiring, because we've already talked about the class sizes and, and so on. And so I just want to let you know now what to expect in February. Uh, is pretty much status quo at all the schools, uh, with the exception of MG twenty-one. With their expansion, of course, we'll be looking to add staff. Their, um, initial due date for applications for the middle school expansion is, is February fifteenth, and so, uh, we do expect to expand there, and we might have to make adjustments throughout the spring, you know, as those enrollments, as we monitor those. Uh, but the big impact, in addition to, you know, a regular classroom teacher or two, uh, will be the student services area. Right now, we share between the high school and MG twenty-one, uh, school, um, uh, social worker, as well as a special education teacher, and we are looking to expand there, so, uh, to have additional support in MG twenty-one, and then that would also be additional support at the high school by increasing that FTE. So, instead of sharing, that we would create, you know, separate positions. So, that's something we've been working on for the last several months, being with MG twenty-one staff as well as the high school administration, and so you can expect recommendations for an increase in those areas when you get, uh, reported in February.
Okay, I, we have just seen on the consent agenda that Alyssa is leaving, so they'll also be replaced.
Replacing, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, so just as a reminder, right now, MG twenty-one High School has three full-time regular teachers, including Rebecca Fox Player, Executive Director, um, and so we'll be looking to expand, you know, with the middle school, and then they have, um, part-time social worker, part-time special ed teacher, and depending on enrollment, what we're hoping to do is actually make both those positions full-time specifically for MG twenty-one. So, when we get the report in February, we'll give more background on that, the rationale and so on, but, so just wanted to give you a heads up on, on what we're.
But the, the general ratio there will be roughly the same as at the high school?
Yeah.
Yeah, very similar.
All right, um, we're gonna go to board reports. I just wanna change number three for Eric, he's not here, so we will table his, uh, to the next meeting. Um, I wanna save the State Education Convention for last, so we'll go with Jeff. Anything to report?
Yeah, we, uh, we finalized our.
Just say, wait, don't, don't we want to start with the education?
No, he just said you want to do the last.
You want to do that, sorry, I missed that. Missed that.
So, why was I say this? No, kidding. We have finalized our date for the February twenty-fourth. In the auditorium, we're going to watch, uh, we're gonna show the thirteenth. We're working on an invite where we can start inviting, uh, community members and stuff like that, but we finalized it, we're gonna do it two-thirty to five, is gonna be our timing, so, um, that was the main focus of our meeting, and subsequent meetings, and hopefully, uh, we'll have more, at the next meeting, we'll have a lot more information on that, and, uh.
What will that be about?
The thirteenth is about the Thirteenth Amendment. Decided, uh, hopefully to have, start doing these from time to time as we get better at it, where we, just kind of a community education kind of night, where, you know, we can bring in different, different, uh, underserved classes and just let them know, like, educate our community and let them know that we are allies, we're all in this together kind of thing, and that, and so we started, we're gonna start with the thirteenth. It doesn't have to be a, uh, documentary every week, every time, but, and then we also decided to invite, we're gonna invite, uh, G-Safe and the Asian Club and talk to them about possible events in the future, and, so, that's what we're at.
Anything else? Okay, uh, Menon Grove Education Foundation, Susan, man.
Okay. Um, Menon Grove Education Foundation met on January eighth. They, um, they reminded, uh, the board that grants need to be received by January thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, and I think they've also sent, right, Dan, I think they also sent that out to the staff as a reminder as well?
Yes.
Okay. Um, they also announced a new memorial scholarship from Dan and Kathy Bernards. Um, they have basically contributed ten thousand dollars, a thousand a year for ten years in honor of Don's mother, and if you remember, that's the same family who made that five-thousand-dollar contribution music orchestra. So, they've been very generous, and, um, Jason McCutcheon is now serving as treasurer. Many thanks to Ed Young for his service. Then, as public appearances, Gem Call and Kathy Bernards came, they're working on T-shirts to build a collaborative unified spirit, so that kids all have a similar shirt that they can wear and, um, that fits them, because it's sometimes hard to find that in the, in the store, um, and then kind of pair that with some fundraising. Then, there was a board discussion about the participation in the district-wide fundraising and the athletic facilities. There was continuing discussion of the foundation role in the district fundraising for the athletic facility. The board showed support and is now further defining their role in that process. They don't see themselves as the leader, but they see themselves as a helper. The fundraiser letter for the foundation will be sent in spring of twenty-nineteen, and under new business, they discussed ongoing grants to include food costs, um, discussion of bank account changes, and they approved Mary Salvi as a new board member. Next meeting is February twelfth at four P.M., and Dean Bowles is the representative from the board, continuing on, so, and again, Dean, if you, if there's any reason you can't go, I'd be happy to go free of it.
When do I start?
They're looking for you.
They're looking for me?
They are. They were last, and they were a little surprised when I walked in.
If I knock at the door, I'll know who it is.
Well, Dean writes a check, so we love it when he comes. So, that's February twelfth.
All right. Okay, we go to the State Education Convention. Um, who'd like to start first, of all the board members that attended?
Not me, Nicole?
Go ahead.
Or we can go around, or we can? Go ahead. Go ahead, little session. I actually typed mine up, and I can give it to Joyce, too, if people want to look at it. Susan and I were at the, and there, and there may have been others, it was a big room, on the poverty breaking, the air cage.
Air, was it that one as well?
What?
Air, was it?
Okay. Um, breaking the air cage of poverty. It was an excellent program presenting personal experiences that helped the audience to understand how to better identify students of poverty and to understand the barriers and challenges presented in their educational processes, and she talked about that for a solid three hours. She helped us understand how to use specific processes to assist in educating students of poverty, identifying the students, identifying the barriers, um, starting with things as simple as differences in the language. She said it's almost like having a student who's bilingual, who speaks a different language, and the differences in culture, and how they dramatically affect their educational process. Tools to improve outcomes include providing support as well as building supports while breaking the isolation of student growth. Um, and then professional development for poverty confidence. Then, um, on Wednesday, I went to, this actually was another great workshop. It was basically alternative compensation plans, practical examples and tools, it was CIC two and one. They have, they have a great amount of research that might be helpful in us as we continue to review ours. It was a strong study of compensation plans, leadership and collaboration, similar to some of the pieces we got on. And then the general session was Steve Pemberton, and I also went, I went to his small group, and one of the things he said to us repeatedly was, we need to be, we need to learn and train to move from classifying people by the visible characteristics and focus on who they are and the life experience they bring. Then I went to State of the State and Gifted Education, Parent Equity and Excellence, and it was actually great, because I continue to advocate for us having a presentation on our advanced father program. I just think it's really important that this board understands that, because that is a serious equity issue. Verona worked on that very hard at the high school level and still feels they aren't having huge success, but it was really, um, a really good workshop, and they, they spoke very clearly about identifying the achievement gap and appropriately serving gifted students from diapers to adults. The key is to identify student needs versus identifying children. So, it was really, uh, a really good workshop. Then we did the breakfast with Tasha, she was an inspirational story of overcoming paralysis. The other one I went to, and I know Peter was there, was that, that the Verona one? We did that one, too. Um, again, another great workshop, Equity-Focused Strategic Planning. Their process was very good, very structured, very put together, um, and I think, and I think Peter's gonna try and get some of that, it would be helpful to review the written materials that they used and the results that they documented. They used a very strong continuous improvement plan, strategic plans, those specific action plans to address the equity issues and reduce the achievement gap. Um, and they used an outside facilitator and felt very strongly you couldn't do it without that because you were too connected. And the other one I went to was, was, that's the, um, the focus on is Youth Mental Health First Aid Training and Solutions, and this is really interesting, because I've been concerned that we haven't had the resources to actually put mental health resource people in our buildings. What these people do is they actually train you, it's an eight-hour, uh, one full-day training session that trains you to be a youth mental health first aid trainer, to have the training so that you can identify the risk and warning signs in a step action plan. Um, and there are DPI funds that the districts can apply for to assist on the cost of this training, so I would say, let's look at it, we have nothing to lose. And it helps people identify versus kids that are just, it helps in the identification. Then the WSB legislative update, it was excellent, you've already heard all that, increase in category play, increase in other health programs, increase in bilingual, increase for student funding. They had the Capitol Wednesday, March thirteenth. The general session was Michelle Borba, how to strengthen student resilience and create compassion. I mean, all these people talked about connecting with a kid, very much like listening to Andrew have a discussion with anybody. You gotta connect with that kid, you gotta talk to that kid, you gotta, and that was the message we got over and over again. Systematic alignment brings clarity and equity to school improvement, that was the force, another great program, a system I process for collaborative data-driven improvement using the contest improvement models. So, this was, and then the general session, the afternoon, but this is one I do want to mention, get your attention for two minutes. It was called Keeping Your Sanity Throughout Planning, Design, and Construction, and it was facilitated by Fender. And there were supposed to be four Director Business Services, but Farland was not there, so it'd be interesting to hear Jeff Mahoney. I think it was because of the weather that he wasn't able to be there, but, um, it is very clear that it's collaborative building, you have to do, you have to construct collaborative building improvement teams, make very clear that you have good solid representation on those, continually to adapt into a such process, collaborative. So, when they talk about keeping your sanity, um, here what, here's what was very clear from the three Director Business Services who spoke, it's effectively their sanity and it's being affected, that effectively, and the gentleman from Waukesha was very clear, and the other two also spoke specifically to this issue. In the early planning and in the process, you need a person in charge, and that effectively, if you don't have someone else, it comes to Director Business Services, sorry, Jerv, but that's what they all said. The Director Business Services, all of these who spoke, Fendor Facilitating, said, we ran the process, and that the one thing they felt they needed seriously was more expertise to help them, and additional staff in their job to help support them in the facility role. Quote-unquote, all three of them said, you have to be actively on site. So, um, I continue to be concerned about how that's gonna work without maybe a personal representative or somebody that acts in that capacity. And then they continue to say in the design process, you seriously collaborated with from staff. You identify the footprint of the building, then you work on the design, and the principles of that design are done with the staff. That actually was, I thought I wouldn't learn anything new. It did validate things that we've already talked about aboard, but, um, had very clearly set the stress that would put on the staff that's already in place, particularly the business services. So, having that concern, particularly as we work through the finances, and, um, I, I think we just, as a board, need to be aware of that. So, I went to Thomas.
Right, so I won't go through all of them, but I, um, I did find some commonalities, and this year at the state conference, uh, I usually kind of have a theme that I mind, the whole theme of the conference this year was equity, and they had a lot of, I thought, excellent presentations, so I tended to select all of those except the one time I went to the WSB legislative update. And interestingly, there were a lot of commonalities. I think that the challenge is, um, I heard, talked in more than one presentation about needing, you know, laser-like focus on equity, and I would say Donna Beagle, when she spoke about poverty, being poverty-informed, it was a laser-like focus. When we talk about mental health, you know, being trauma-informed, it, it's a lot of, you know, there are a lot of things that we're asking our staff to be focused on all at one time, and each of these presenters was saying it needed to be focused only on this in order to make a change, so it'll, it'll, I think it'll be interesting for further discussion. One of the things that stood out from all of them, and the Verona one I agreed was excellent, I also went to, you know, a couple others that I thought were, were very strong, talked about, it had the importance of effective teachers again, 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 and that that includes, um, pedagogy, knowledge of, you know, not, real pedagogy, knowledge of teaching methods and that whole thing. Experience shows up, there's research now that shows that that makes a difference, years of experience, um, and making connections with the kids, that was across the board, whether it was the mental health issues, the poverty issues, or the, um, the racial issues and, you know, equity issues. You know, looking, when you're looking at behavior, really focusing on the why of the behavior and not the what, not, or not just the what, but the why, and really getting to know each of these kids' stories, it was, was very interesting, um, because that was just stressed, as I said, time and time again, and, and also the idea that you have to teach kids how to ask for help, because, and parents, because they don't, um, but not making assumptions. Pointing out that the use of focus groups that Verona did, they very intentionally worked on getting representatives of different parts of their community, including, um, you know, those who usually don't hear from, and talking about the fact that all those perspectives are valid, that they're all partial, because they're all through that person's lens, but they're all important and they bring something to the table. They also talked about data and talked about privileged data, and that privileged data is all the quantitative stuff, the test stuff, and that we also have to look at the qualitative quantitative data, which is the actual lived experiences of our kids when we're talking about what we're doing, and, you know, we've talked about that a lot, we've talked about the school report card and how little it really measures of what goes on in our schools, but, that we have, we have to look at both, kind of recognize the shortcomings of them. They also talked about beware of value gap, and this, this is from the Verona one, but I heard similar ideas in the others, that, um, we oftentimes give youth services to equity, for example, but don't necessarily follow through with resources and focus, and that, um, that that's a very important piece of all of that. And you can do a look at this area of debt, I mean, there's, there's a whole lot on looking at, you know, the different data, and, and also the different kinds of data. The legislative update was kind of, um, there, there is more support for increased funding. Governor Ewers has talked about two-thirds funding, and supposedly, we heard the other day that Robyn Boss, if someone supported that, will say that that goes, I mean, it, you know, it's set up right now to look like it's going to be a battle, but, um, but Governor Ewers is also trying to raise, uh, the level of, um, special ed funding, reimbursements to sixty percent, I think, which will be a huge step forward. So, you know, we'll see, there, there are some, some different things coming up. There also were the kind of warnings that there's still talk about, um, additional limits on, um, on referenda, on, you know, and that, how enrollment, it was on school enrollment courses, but also referendum, that referendum kind of issues. Uh, competitive bidding mandates may come back again, um, push for more financial literacy education is something that might happen. And also, there's apparently some interest in mandatory expulsion processes regardless of investigation for firearms on school grounds, so that's another issue. So, there are some things being talked about that we'll have to pay attention to, but on the whole, I thought, once again, the state conference was, was very useful, I'm not on the agenda to talk about the national one, so I'll talk about that later, and I have a lot to say, and I'm really looking forward to the next Teaching Area Equity Committee to have a. to have a real discussion about some of these things, because it's good, very thought-provoking.
Sure.
I didn't go to as many good ones as these guys, for some reason. The only one I went that was memorable was the How to Expand Your Teacher Pool. They talked, it was Ashkosh talking about your teacher candidate pool, about making partnerships with like businesses and stuff, but they didn't address the reason we have a teacher act of this, because teachers have been treated poorly in our state for years, and we haven't done anything to affect that. So, why people, they said, "If you have a big business in your town, go there and try and get half, half the spouses to come and teach." So, you're gonna get half the spouses who are living their life now to go to school and get their certificate, and then come teach, and then teach, you know, very, it's rewarding, but unsympathetic career. So, I, so I don't know where they were getting their stuff from, but the one thing I did like though was Principal Al, at the end, I really, 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 I thought he was the best speaker in, in all the years I've been. So, like we said, the children who need the most love show us in the most loving ways. So, which I thought was, I've been thinking about that a lot, so.
All right. I was the delegate, and I actually, I, this, you know, being the first year, I enjoyed it. It's a shame that they have to meet annually, it should be at least twice a year, because of all of the policies that they're trying to get up to the lobbyists. The one that really stood out, what all the board members felt, was with the safety. And we wanted to try to change the language on giving a child a felony charge, making that up to the school. So, we were in there debating about it, of changing the language. We know that each school district has their own policy, and this was gonna just, this policy was just gonna amp it up. And what we argued about was if a kid that has an IEP or a 504 that said, made a threat and then comment in the school to someone, that, that could be a felony charge. However, we made sure that we changed that and made it to say it would be up to the discretion of the school district. However, if the threat was around an officer at that time, it would be out of the school district's hand. There'd be nothing that the school district can do about it. So, that was the back and forth that, that was going on. Also, tried to make an amendment of putting in more resource officers in the school districts. Again, I thought about that maybe a middle and a high school should have one resource officer, not several, because again, you don't want the school district to look like a pipeline to prison. So, I put out there about youth advocates. A lot of small school districts and some others didn't understand what was a youth advocate, where I'm a youth advocate. And what I told them was that a youth advocate is a buffer between the administration and the student, or the teacher and the student. If a student is just having a bad day and just go off on a teacher, well, youth advocate can get there and handle the situation before you put in law enforcement. Resource officers should just only be there when it get catastrophic, okay? If it's, if it's, a child is really going belligerent and attacking people, that's when the officers should be there. But a youth advocate can really bring that stuff down, find out what the situation is, and work, you know, work from there. So, a lot of the smaller school districts, I had, actually was meeting with a lot of more school districts, and wasn't able to really get into a lot of the sessions, because I, I had a lot of school districts asking me about youth advocates and whether they do the purpose, so I've sent a lot of them out. When I was at work Tuesday, I sent out, you know, job descriptions of what a youth advocate is. And hopefully, the policy would go to the lobbyists, to go to Tony Evers, to put more money into youth advocates. Again, the inner, the inner city, the bigger schools, they have a lot of resources where a lot of the small school districts don't. So, now, those small school districts would need to get a little funding so they can get their youth advocate, and as well, as us as well. So, there'd be, there'd be some things happening here, so I'm gonna keep a close eye on it. But I would like to be the delegate again, and hopefully, and, and I've really learned a lot, and just talked, talked to a lot of people that have, like, slight issues in their schools, and opened the door that if they wanted me to come speak or whatever, to please contact me, feel free, and we can discuss a lot of things. So, that's what I learned, I had fun with it.
Someone came up to me and told me I'm very well represented in the WSB.
Yeah, I tried.
Not that I was, not that I was concerned about that.
I'll be concerned. I made a motion to go to bathroom, it was second. That was the only thing that passed.
No, that's good, I'm glad to hear you're enjoying it. But I always think it's, it's very interesting, and it sounds like your comments will, will be yours as well. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay. From what I've heard, I, I think I would like to hear more about the youth advocate function, role and function, and how it works, at some time, that you can do that with all the members here.
Well, and imagine you're taking youth advocate position, and you put them in that first aid mental health training per day, and maybe that's not required, but you put that piece in there, because they help identify those pieces as they are for those kids, and they, they're able to identify that when they're kids, first graders rather than sit on them when they're high schoolers.
A youth advocate wears many hats, just like some of our teachers do in the, in the district, they wear many hats. So, it's just, you know, being prepared, and just opening up and talking with students, and getting them to get back in focus and line. Yeah, definitely, we can definitely have talks about it if, you know, meet whatever. So. All right. Going to possible action items, we should go ahead and table both of these.
Actually, the first one we need to, the open enrollment.
Okay, let's go ahead and do them. The second one we will table to the next one, however, we'll go ahead and do with the first one.
Yeah, and that's why, actually, canceling was not even a consideration for us, because we have to statutorily approve our open enrollment numbers by the end of January, because February 1st is the beginning of open enrollment, we have to have those numbers published, you know, for parents. So, Jared gave a report at the last meeting on a preliminary recommendation, a slight revision tonight, so I'll, I'll let Jared speak a little bit to, to that recommendation.
Sure. Yep, at the last meeting, we had come, we were approaching the second Friday count, and so we always wanna include the second, second Friday count into our count. So, based on that information, we have revised our proposed new open enrollment seats down by three. And so, what you'll see, what will be approved tonight, or we are asking for approval, is broken down by grade level, and broken down by the total of open enrollment, and then we also have to approve based on special education. And right now, based on our staffing ratios and IEP ratios that has been calculated by our Student Services Department, of the 30 ninth graders we can take, of those 35 can be special ed otherwise, all of our staff, the student ratios are at our level, so we would not be able to accept any new students with special ed needs. So, that one, the number that we're looking at is 140, so that, that's not an additional five, it's of the 35 can be IEP students.
What are those numbers?
140?
140.
140 new open enrollments?
Potentially open, new open enrollment seats. So, how it works is, for the most part, we are, as Dan had mentioned in his reports, status quo for teaching, other at MG21. So, if you look at the document that I did attach in administrative content, it shows you how we calculate the proposed new open enrollment spots. We take our second Friday, and we roll those students forward, and then we look at what our enrollment projections look like, and then look at some historical data and what we've seen in new students enrolling in over the past school year, in addition to some historical data. Right now, the only area that we're seeing some change, movement in staff would be at Winnicott. So, currently, at kindergarten, we have five sections, so based on our upcoming enrollment, we're going down to four. However, those kindergarteners are moving into first grade, so there's only four sections right now that's moving up to five. So, we're still netting out at zero. So, when we look at open enrollment per state law, we have board policy that gives us a class size goal, in addition to our range. And so, when we look at open enrollment, we're staffing, or we're enrolling to our goal, we're not exceeding that. So, and we have, for example, at Taylor Prairie, approximately 145 students coming next year. Currently, we have eight sections there, we're proposing keeping eight sections. In order to meet our goal of 20, we would have that open enrollment number that we're proposing. And then we walk through that, through all of our grades. The one area that you'll see, Glazier Drummond, we do not have, we're not necessarily at some of our goal levels for those classes, however, that building is looking at about 900 students, which would be over what we'd feel is the ideal capacity, and so that's why we're zeroing there. And then over the last couple of years, we have not opened enrolled, opened new spots at freshman level, and this year, we're going back to that 30 based on having a smaller incoming freshman. To put it sort of in perspective, I'd get the 140, seems like a very large number. However, last year, we actually opened up 122 spots. The difference from last year to this year is last year, we came in and only approved 67 spots in January, and then we added another 55 in June. So, we've really studied this, worked with our principals, looked at our enrollment numbers, and felt that it was better off to come in in January and reflect what we truly believe is happening, instead of coming back in June. Because last year, when we came back in June, we opened up some additional first grade and second grade positions, and those, our kindergarten and first grade positions, and those positions did go unfilled, because obviously, in June, people have already made those decisions, and even though we're opening up, we had spots. So, you're seeing that, you know, this year, in kindergarten at Taylor Prairie, we were 18.38, about 18, and the average class size was 18 per class, which is under our class size goal by approximately two, how we have that range of 16 to 23. So, we applied that to all of our classes, grade levels throughout our building, to come up with a chart that you'd be approving for the 140.
Basically, you're following, excuse, basically, you're following the same policies and practices that we've had, rolling them through and things like that.
Yes, yeah.
Can you, and I'm betting it has to do with that first grade class? So, I received a question, kind of about the kindergarten numbers, and I just said I'd ask. So, in Taylor, in Taylor Prairie, you see a possible reduction of two, sections are staying the same, but we're seeing 15 open enrollment spots. And then at Winnicott, I'm seeing a reduction from 93 to 75, going down a full section with five. So, again, when I look at that comparison, so our rationale for not taking more and maintaining the five sections in kindergarten is...
So, a couple of reasons. Typically, the district has taken the belief in the sand that we don't accept enough open enrollment to create a new section. So, when you look at Winnicott, based on the number of 4K kids that are currently enrolled at Winnicott and IHM that would roll into, that are planning to attend next year and have selected that they would like to come to Winnicott, and then adding in the, looking at the census that we have, students that are not attending our 4K program, that do live in the Manona area, that's where we're coming up with 75 students. So, if we left that at five sections, that ultimately, we would have to accept enough open enrollment to create a whole new section for that. The other part of it is, is that we do have a number of room, a, at Winnicott, all of our rooms are full, and so if we added another section at Winnicott, we'd be out of space for classroom size, or classroom numbers. So, by rolling those forward, we're actually net zeroing outs for sections, and along with standing with the status quo concept that we don't open up, open enrollment for an entire new section.
And the number of open enrollment of 15 for kindergarten at Taylor Prairie, we're not opening a new section.
Correct, so we're maintaining that eight sections. If we went down to seven, we're actually pushing it to the top end of our range, and then that means that if we had a couple of students that moved in that we didn't count, we would actually be outside of our range.
Again, I, it just seems to parallel that if you put, you also had even 10 in kindergarten at Winnicott, that would, that would maintain the five sections with five teachers.
I can object, the problem is, we'd have to add an additional staff personnel to do that.
But we already have five.
No, but one, but first grade next year increases from four to five, so one of those kindergarten teachers will move to first grade next year.
Okay.
So, for the whole school, we have the exact same number of staff, you'll see, you'll...
Okay, so we're not really, so that was the question.
Yeah.
We're not really, and I shouldn't just ask that, we're not really reducing staff, we're moving staff.
Yep, so kindergarten section decreases, but a first grade section increases.
So, maybe it was kindergarten teacher that doesn't want to teach first grade.
Or, it could also be, you know, you could look at it too, is we have a third grade section at Winnicott that's going from five to four sections, however, our fifth grade is going up a section. So, no one's losing, we're not reducing staffing, it's just...
Imbalances, that's exactly what I needed to hear.
Jeff, and then Dean.
So, I understand what you're saying, I get a little nervous though, about the battles I just fought, in the K through five area for a new school and all this open enrollment we're taking, so that makes me a bit nervous. I mean, obviously, 13 and 12 isn't a full section, but it's pretty close, it's a considerable amount, you know what I mean? And I understand where you're coming from, but it just makes me a little nervous in terms of presenting to people that have been yelling at me for six months about our open enrollment. Not that they're correct, it's just, these numbers seem a little...
Yep, so like I said, like last year, we were at 122, and the biggest difference is we, we are taking an additional 30 freshmen, so that would really push us, you know, if we kept that, you know, at that 150. And realistically, I think where it gets a little challenging is, and January is our initial number, and then we come back in June, and people don't always connect those two numbers, and that's truly the, the new seats that we're opening. I feel confident, I mean, I shouldn't say I feel confident, I'm pretty sure that we're not gonna fill out 140. I mean, what we're gonna see is, we're gonna fill up 4K in kindergarten pretty quickly, and our freshmen, but then what happens is the applicant, the number of applications really drop off, you know, between first, seconds, and, you know...
I mean, a third of them are pre-K and freshmen.
Yes.
So, I mean, I guess it's a big number, we haven't taken freshmen for a few years. Again, people like to complain about certain things, 150 is what they want, or 140 is what they want to complain about, they don't want to sit here, the detailed explanations of why you are...
Yep. And the key point, I mean, I would agree with you with that, Jeff, the key point is, is we're balancing out our classes to make sure that we're meeting the goal, but we still have the ability to accept, you know, obviously, our new residents that continue to move in, we've built some of that in, but we also have room for additional to move in before we hit going over our ranges. And then the other part of it is, is it does allow some additional revenue to come in that may be able to continue to help balance the budget.
And I, if I don't mind, just real quick, and I'm sorry, I don't want to belabor the point, but it's a really good point, Jeff, I think we just need to be really clear, and we've always tried to communicate this when that question comes up, we are not hiring additional staff to accommodate, we're not creating additional sections, it's simply to balance class sizes. And it seems like a large number, but when you're talking about 3,500 kids in the entire district, in comparison, it really is a pretty small number. But I understand the concern, I think it's really important we continue to communicate that clearly when that question comes up.
Go ahead, Dean first, here.
Jared, on the special education open enrollment, the, I realize that's been an issue all the time, because there are, there are multiply handicapped kids that are very high, high cost and that sort of thing. When those open enrollments, do you, do you deal with them as, as a special education student generically, or do you, or do you look at their IEP and therefore the kind of teacher and support that they're going to need? Because some, some may be multiply handicapped, and there are others that may be a, have less, less demanding services and so forth, but how do you handle those, those? Because there, because there's a, there's a wide range of... How do you handle those, those because they're, because there's a, there's a wide range of needs and, and costs and staffing that, that are built in there that, that don't look like classes though.
Right.
Do you follow what I'm getting at?
Yep.
If you, sure. Go for it. Okay. Yeah, really, we can't differentiate. It's simply, so we have to look at, and we do service all students as cross categorical, you know, with their needs. And so, uh, but yeah, the reality is we can't base it upon, uh, if we look at our caseloads of our staff and that's how we made the determination, you know, with, that we have room for five students at ninth grade. Uh, but we, we just look at kind of averages. We, we can't, if a student has exceptionally high needs, uh, we can't turn that student away because of that.
That's why the law was originally written. So I, I'm wondering if, if it had changed because it, because you, you could have, uh, all those could be multiply handicapped, uh, that's, which could create demands of services in some areas and not in others.
Yeah. No, no question. If all five seats were filled with, um, real, you know, exceptionally high need students, that may mean that the additional, uh, support would be in excess of, uh, you know, revenue we received and we just would have to deal with that.
So then the acceptance is, it is literally a random draw.
It is. Yep.
Yep.
Susan.
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say that, that as far as the other, not the special, the special ed too, it's all in keeping with legal requirements and policy requirements. I think we also have to remind people of that, that if we have space up to our goal, we have to open it. So it's not, it's not our decision. Um, and I think, I think people do, you know, that's always hard for people to understand. The other question I could hear people raising is the taking thirty freshmen. And I think that's, if that's raised, it's important to point out that that keeps the high school at the same size it is this year. And that when you look at those classes coming up, they're all slightly smaller. So in terms of the people who are all worried about the high school getting too big, we haven't taken any for a few years because we were keeping a lid on the size. And this is the first year now we have a smaller class that enables us to take this many. Um, the classes coming up are also slightly smaller, but, you know, by the time they get there, that may change. We don't, that's where the growth that we're going to see, college growth may have an impact on that. But right now it doesn't increase the size of the high school beyond what it is right now. So I think that's also important to be able to emphasize if people ask that question.
What is the amount of funds that follow each general student?
Um, so for regular ed, it's, uh, seventy-one hundred right now.
Yeah.
And for special ed, uh, special ed is twelve thousand five hundred.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
So that is the, that was probably one of the bigger changes.
Special ed is a, is a, it's a single number and, but, but the needs may vary from, from high cost to low cost.
So prior to making all the changes, when a, a district would accept a special ed student, um, we would be able to build the, um, the home, the school district for that student for anything that was above the regular ed. So if they happen to come with a need of a one-on-one aide, that would have been an excessive amount. We could have built that back to it, but now it's a flat dollar amount. Does not matter if it's just speech and language or if it's EBD or autism.
Is special ed categorized as IEP? Is that how you, so it's a good one?
Yes, yep.
Uh, Jared, one thing, uh, one question. Within, within MG twenty-one opening up the middle school part, would that number, because they're trying to get fifty to start in the middle, would that affect the numbers as well? Cause I didn't see the middle school part for MG twenty-one.
So right now we do believe that might affect it, but since it's brand new and opening up, we're not for sure what that will look like. So we might have to modify that if we do find that it, we, we meet that fifty goal. Um, it will bring the, the middle school down to eight fifty is which where we say, so we might not come back with new open enrollment. But that might change what class sizes look like there and, uh, another conversation about the number of sections.
Okay. One, one other question. Dan, uh, when you've given public presentations, you've used the generic data that, the generic thing that ten open, ten general enrollment students, uh, yields X, X amount of dollars. How much is that?
Yeah. So in general, um, if Jared said, you know, the, the, um, revenue is about seventy-one hundred dollars per student. So in general, with for about every ten open enrollment students, that would approximately cover the cost of hiring a new teacher. And knowing that, you know, a teacher generally has a class size of larger than ten, um, you know. So as long as you're not having to hire additional staff, it is a net benefit to revenue.
And we should point out again that the amount we get is still less than what they get for vouchers for individual students in private schools.
Everybody, I want to apologize. We had a water line freeze and break in the office. Cascade everywhere.
At least it wasn't in your house.
No, it wasn't my house. Well, I, I haven't been home this afternoon, so I don't know. The, uh, did I send you a text? I'm sorry. I should have checked because in that part of the building, myself, reception.
Okay.
Bad, so it did not go through.
The answer's been.
And I didn't, and I didn't check. Well, you can continue.
Yeah, we almost done, so.
Good.
Did we have any more, any more questions, concerns with the open enrollment recommendations? If not, uh, do I have a motion to pass open enrollment recommendations for two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Yeah, moved second. For discussions, anything? Out of favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Uh, policy revision, we are going to go ahead and table that.
Provoke that until.
Provoke to the next one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, discussions, considerations of the following items. Facilities planning related to November sixth, two thousand eighteen referendum.
Okay, so, uh, looking ahead to our February twenty-seventh meeting, I will have a representative from UA in Fendorf here for another detailed update on the planning process. And so just real briefly, some of the things that, uh, we're still in the process of, of working through or since the last time that we reported out, um, you're aware that we're working on the procedures for annexation and land acquisition. And so more to come on that at the next meeting. Uh, school, new school design process, um, not much additional information to report there. We're just, again, uh, just really beginning putting together those initial, uh, conceptual plans. And, and, uh, that's something we'll talk about much more in detail again when the architects are here, you know, in February, um, as we move forward. Uh, we're beginning to gather information about sustainable solutions. Um, and so that's something that we'll want to, you know, that'll be part of the board discussion as well about different options that we have available there. Uh, so that's, planning is going on. Uh, and then the school renovations, um, you know, coinciding with the new school. Uh, again, we're going back and revisiting all the things that we had tentatively on the list as possible renovations. Uh, we're scheduling meetings with all the school principals in the next couple of weeks to kind of go through those and to really, uh, confirm some of the things or make sure that we have everything as potential items. Then again, that we can make sure we share out with the board, uh, you know, when we come back in February. So a lot of process in gathering information is still what's happening right now.
Okay, Susan.
And the principals in their staff meetings also are talking about that. So at the point when they go over that input with you, they will also have heard. I mean, I mean, talking about what the plans are for the building with staff and then getting staff comments or in questions.
Yeah, I think that's something that we're in a different place in, in every building because of the work. So it, um, that's something we'll want to talk about with, there's been not much of that discussion because there's been no decisions about what is happening. It's really the information gathering. But I think that will be a really important piece then as we start to kind of confirm which pieces are up for consideration. Then, you know, that, that process for the staff endpoint. And, and that's something that, uh, we're in the process of developing, developing the process.
Um, Dan, one of the things they talked about in that session, and again, it was facilitated by Fendorf. So they were obviously a part of how that was being talked about. They made it very clear that once the footprint was done, you need strong collaborative staff input on development. So again, I just want to make sure we're putting that structure and process in place. We aren't gonna get to the end of the building. Nobody talk to me about the services. Okay.
Yeah. You're gonna get the, no matter what you do, you're gonna.
And if we can come back and say, do that.
No, I get it. I'm just saying, yeah. And that's one of the things, I think the real, one of the important pieces as UA and Fendorf is coming and as well as when Jared and I report out, is that the board completely a hundred percent understands the process about how the staff is involved and when, you know, also, that's kind of your accountability if you make sure that's happening.
All right. Any more questions, discussion? All right. Future meetings? Any questions on those?
I guess we're going to have some.
Go for it.
Oh, I, I have one. Um, well, I can break, take, mention this to Eric. On April second, there's a teaching learning equity meeting at six thirty and that's the day that I'll be working at the pole, so I don't need to.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That is election day.
I've probably talked to Eric before, but I just saw that on here. Just wanna.
Uh, April second.
Teaching learning equity committee is scheduled for April second, which is election day. So I'm just saying, something we, if we can reschedule, I, I'd like to.
Okay. So maybe, uh, when they have the, uh, the TLE meeting, uh, February fifth, they can change it. There's plenty of time to do that.
Yep.
Okay.
If I can just bring the board's attention, we had asked on the first Monday of the month to pencil in to hold those days for potential additional special, more visual workshops. So the next one, right.
So Wednesday and not Monday.
Did I say Monday? I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I meant Wednesday. Thank you. So next Wednesday, February sixth, uh, we'd like to confirm that we would like to meet. And that will be an opportunity for our next check-in on the superintendent evaluation. So just confirming that date.
Okay. February sixth at six thirty.
Yeah.
Have any?
That was at six thirty.
At six thirty.
Six thirty, did you say?
Yeah.
So we used to use this time to talk about, um, items where you discuss. And I would like to bring up something. I've been hearing a lot lately about dueling and the problem it is at high school. And I think it's something that we should somehow find a way to address. Cause I don't know, I know, I mean, it doesn't seem to me it's being addressed very well. I, I get that it's a one-day suspension if you're caught. Obviously that isn't a deterrent to anyone. So we need to figure out something as a district, as a community, as a board to start addressing. It's a serious problem.
So through policy?
Through policy, through something, yeah.
Well, I.
I mean, it's something that we gotta start addressing somehow.
I guess I would, I would like to hear from the administration how it's being dealt with now first before we. I've, I'm not a fan of putting specific disciplinary steps in policy per se.
Right.
But I think if we have reason to think from their data that there's increasing and it's whatever is happening, then we, we can maybe talk to them. I mean, yeah.
Right. And somehow we gotta address it and that would be getting the information out of us.
Do we address smoking in policy at all?
Just that it's not allowed. I mean, it's, that's state law, state statute.
We don't have any additional?
It's in the high school, I don't know.
We don't have any, we don't address it any other way?
The difference is smoking is, you can't hide smoking.
Oh, I, I understand. I, I understand.
And from what I understand, the, the punishment is a day out of school.
And, and as we, we can talk about this in there in time. I don't think it's fair to say that nothing's being done. Our administration and teachers and.
I get that.
Working very hard on.
But if your punishment is a day out of school and people continue, that means the punishment isn't, isn't having any effect.
Punishment is not the, there are many other things in addition, you know, to that with education and so on that are happening, but.
That's why I suggested we should hear from them, what it is. Cause I, that was my first reaction is that can't possibly be what the only thing. So, yeah.
Actually, our, our policy just does specify both tobacco and, and electronic cigarettes.
Right.
It sort of, it treats them equally in the policy, but it does specifically call for.
Because you can literally do it, not anybody knows.
Right, I understand.
So there you go.
And across the nation, so we just have to figure it out.
We can't figure it out if we don't start to figure it out.
So should we be expelling more people then?
No. That's why I don't think suspension is the right thing either.
All right. Um, yeah, that's it. So can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
He's in favor. He said aye.
He voted both.
No, no, he's okay. Motion carried.
Great, I'll let Tom in.